Meeting of October 9, 2019 to order. We need a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary?
Here. All right. Public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Expedite matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter. The mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Anybody here to speak on items not on the agenda?
Don't rush up at once. Anybody here at all?
Yeah. You know, everybody wonders why I read that, but I'll tell you, since we're broadcasting to the TV audience, I figure if people get that, so when they show up, maybe they'll be a little more informed. So, item three, public matters. Notice the public hearing conduct annual review of rates and charges for various city services and adopt a resolution approving changes in certain fees and charges effective November 1, 2019. Boy, you just jumped up there.
Yeah. You should do the finance director for the city police. And every year, the city has staff review the rates and then to determine if we're going to cover, mainly is determining if we're going to cover the cost of our base. They say there's a whole long load of lists which are highlighted. I need it listed because if I list, it's probably two, three pages long. So, in the attachment, one of the things I do want to revise is on the page two, page two. Actually, it's line number 14. I scratched out the base use fee for community center and now I need to put those back on. That's on the line number 14, for administrative and the city clerk fees. So, it's 275 for no alcohol use of community center per day. That needs to be put back on. I would have scratched out on the attachment.
And that doesn't represent a change?
That's the change.
It's a current fee.
That's the current fee. We need to keep it and then that's how we...
And also, is the use of alcohol one?
Yeah, alcohol is 575 per day.
And that isn't a change either?
That's not changing.
Okay.
Yeah. And also, there is on the next page, the line number five, we would like to increase the, under the facility rental and hourly rate for the pool, and we would like to increase two lifeguards, one to 40 persons per hour, for $120.
From 100, right?
From 100 to 120. And then the three lifeguards is from 110 to 140, and the four lifeguards from 120 to 160. That's the only changes of this one.
And that captures our costs then when it sounds like, because of the, I'm assuming because of the increase in minimum wage?
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly.
So, okay.
So, other than that, any comments?
I'll let you guys go first, and I did have some questions. Maybe Dusty, just go ahead, Larry.
Back on the, the community, wasn't Police Services, where is it?
Call the police.
There it is. It's the Community Development Department.
Oh, that's later.
What?
That's later?
No, that's in this.
Yeah, that's in this here.
Isn't this?
Yeah.
Is it okay to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
How come it took a jump from $1,000 to $2,500?
Our general plan, admin deposits.
That's kind of what, it's kind of going the same thing. So, I figured Dusty was going to explain it for us.
Yep.
Good evening, council. Dusty, Billy, you're community development director. Yeah, so that's quite a significant jump, going from $1,000 to $2,500. And you see that on, being recommended by staff on a number of cost recovery projects. And what that jump is, is requesting that the initial deposit for the project, instead of being $1,000, go up to $2,500. Because in looking in this further and recognizing the time it's going to take for staff or an outside consultant to process these applications, they're going to be much more than $1,000 and probably much more than $2,500. And so, that was, that was the reason for requesting the increased deposit, was the fact that these projects typically cost much more than that. And if you collect $1,000 deposit, you're going to be calling the applicant pretty soon after to get further money. So, in a way, it might facilitate the faster processing of permit by a little bit. I'll also say, though, that in a unique circumstance where we collected $2,500 deposit and we only ended up, say, spending $2,000 processing the permit, we would refund them the $500. So, it's an increase in, requesting increase of the initial deposit.
Yeah, I'm just very surprised that it took that big a jump, because normally, it doesn't take, they don't take that big a jump.
So, the reality is, we're not increasing the actual cost of the permit because it's cost recovery. It's just we're increasing the initial deposit amount that we collect.
Matt, do you have a question?
I was just wondering, we ourselves can initiate, obviously, general plan changes or zoning, text changes, all that, that's just on us. But how often have we had applicants asking for zone text amendments and, for that matter, zone changes? It seems like they don't come here very often.
We do have a handful of zone change requests right now, where, or requests are requesting to go from one zoning to another zoning. A lot of times, depending on what that zone change is, it also requires a general plan amendment. So, we're currently processing a number of those types of applications. Zoning text amendment may be a little bit less, but an example would be, you know, someone, you know, wanting to establish a printing service in a C-1 zoning, but the printing services aren't allowed in C-1. And so, they might request a zoning text amendment for the council to consider adding printing services as an allowed use in the C-1 zoning in our general commercials. So, it's very plausible that people could make that request. A lot of times, they don't like the rule and they want the rule changed for their own benefit. It might not be something that the council wants the city to sponsor and take on as a top priority, but this is a way for them to get the matter in front of you. But often, it's time consuming and you're not just looking at their individual project, you have to sort of recognize how that change is going to affect the city at large. So, there can be quite an extensive review process that goes with some types of those requests.
I think the zoning change is something that's far overdue to go through the whole thing in the city, because it's becoming tighter and tighter on getting things, you know, people, places, and things the way it's zoned. It's been zoned for a long time, the way it is now. And I think that we, as a council, certainly ought to look at it in one of the meetings in the future to really look at it very truthfully about what we should do with the community, because it's, it's not working now, because, I mean, Dusty can tell you far better than I can, but, I mean, it's just, we just need to work on it, really need to work on it.
Dusty, so again, if I walk in and say, "I want to create a dinosaur theme park," and want to bend your ear for, how about, I guess, since we're talking about raising fees, but I just want to chat with you briefly, as opposed to spending five hours, and maybe that's why you need the deposit, so that you're going to start initiating work. You're always open to talking to folks, but I'm assuming at a certain point, you cut it off and say, "Look, you really need to file this paperwork and this application." And is that how that works?
Right. There are times where conversations get a little winded, and it's always a little bit of balancing act of, you know, getting folks to recognize that, you know, you're busy and you've got other things to do, and, but not wanting to be rude and cut the conversation offshore. So, but it does happen where people just sort of walk in and...
I guess my...
Have a lot of good ideas, and usually, what we're able to do is, you know, get them to organize their thoughts and come back with a little more concise development and, you know, make an appointment and...
I'm going to maybe reframe your question. You don't have to pay a deposit until you actually submit an application.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, right. So, you can talk about your project till you're blue in the face, but we can't charge you until you actually make a...
But yeah, but it comes down to the point, the whole purpose of collecting this is so that before work starts, either you go contract with somebody that's a subject matter expert in the application, or you start work on it. So that if I'm just, and I use my dino park example, I have that today, and then all of a sudden, I'm flippant about it and want to change, well, you've got my deposit. So, if you've done all this work on my dino park, and then I decide I want to do something else, then you charge that work against that deposit.
Correct.
So...
Yeah, thank you.
And also, by the general practice, we keep tracking all the cost, staff time costs or the consulting costs. And then if we reach 75% of deposits, we're going to send applicants to letter says, "Hey, this is, this reached 75% of the deposits being spent, and then we need additional $1,000 deposit to go on with work, to keep the project running." So, we're not just going to use the money the whole and, "Oh, you still owe us $2,500." No, we don't do that. We will reach 75% of the deposits, we will send them out to applicants.
That way, we're not left holding the bag. If somebody starts a project, then at least we've covered our costs, and then if they stall, then we move on and go from there. Yeah, I think that was, something I just kind of wanted to get out, that we're still friendly, but in the end, we're trying to recover costs upfront.
Right. As staff, we can't act as your agent, your consultant, your engineer, your, you know...
Yeah. And also, in this year, we implement admin fees of 15%, just if we contract consultants out. And then for staff who managing the consultant, staff time involved, is it charged staff time to managing the consult, pay the bills and communicate with consultant how the product goes, which charge, like, 15% of the consultant bills on top of the actual bill. That's what we're going to bill to the applicants.
15%?
No, 15%. Yeah. If the consultant sends us a bill, like, $1,000, we just charge 150, because we have to pull out people, work on the process.
And one more question, June. Waste water department, the residential within the city of Willets and Meadowbrook Manor, per EDU 739 to 88840. Prop 218 annual rate increase, that was, we've already had the rate increase, so this is, that's reflecting that, so...
Yeah, I'm just going to make it the whole schedule so that's, I've plugged it there. Those are already done.
Okay. So, that's reflected in that prop 218 hearing, but it shows up here in the rate schedule?
Yeah.
Okay.
Later on, building fees, probably going to have updates, but that will be separate council report, because they're more complicated. Those going to be, Dusty have a separate council report to present, and then they will be eventually added along on this master fee schedule.
Is that impact fees or is that separate?
Building permit fees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because those are more complicated and have to go through a more process. Yeah. So, we're not changing at this time, but when we have the base, we'll change it later on.
Okay. Any other questions up here?
When I met with city manager earlier this week, we talked a little bit about the fees on some of the community buildings, the community center, the rec row, and we talked a little bit about the ball fields. We agreed that it's reasonable to keep the fees on the ball fields low for community use, for the, you know, youth soccer and little league. But because the fee that's charged here is for tournaments and special events that, in theory, are for use by people who live outside of the community, we wondered if it wouldn't be smart to actually increase that a little bit, knowing how much our public works department puts into keeping those fields in good repair. So, I just wanted to put that out to the rest of the council, that that might be something to consider, to help offset costs of maintenance on those fields.
Are they coming out special for those things, or just?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, so if I have a tournament, is there a public works person that's assigned to that event to come out?
No, not to the event. I'm sorry.
But prepping before and after kind of thing?
It's just like when we're around the park, you know, they go out and make sure that the bathrooms are clean and the kitchen's all on and that kind of stuff before the event takes place. So, there is staff time that is involved in that.
And it's kind of too bad that Suprema isn't here tonight, because she has so much more intimate knowledge of how the soccer tournaments work there, and she would have a better idea of how those costs affect the people who put them on. But I just, you know, I see that when we're increasing the costs on the use of the community center and the rec row and the bandstand, and that's all affecting local people, but then here is a fee that's being charged essentially to people who are coming from out of the area and we're not touching it, makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, maybe over the years, different youth groups that we've been involved with, these were usually moneymakers for the local group. So, even though you are bringing other folks in, it was the local group that was benefiting, as opposed to the outsiders coming in.
Okay.
So, I guess you could make the argument both ways, in that whether it was a swim meet, or whether it was a soccer tournament, or whatever, usually, it was an opportunity for the local group to use it as a fundraiser. So, I think I wouldn't feel comfortable looking at those fees without a little more public notice to say, I mean, I'm not opposed to raising them maybe next year, but with the understanding that I would like some more public dialogue to get a better understanding, because maybe the only way they make money, but we also can't continue to subsidize it either. So, but nothing else, I'd just like them to be noticed that we're going to discuss it in that detail, as opposed to just throw in a fee.
Is there a difference between youth tournaments and kid tournaments?
What's that?
There's a difference between youth or adult? Is there a difference?
Well, youth tournaments we didn't charge for.
Oh, okay.
They don't, they don't pay anything, and that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
The only, when I have soccer, the men's soccer league and the women's soccer league, they come in, we kind of do an average of a price for that, because they rent it for three weekends or four weekends out of the month, for three months. And, and then sometimes, like, the casino will rent it for a weekend to have a baseball tournament, something like that.
Yeah, no, I think even the adult leagues use these tournaments as fundraisers, you know, where, I know when my wife come on to do pickleball, so...
If they're using it, I'm, I'm not aware of it.
Oh, okay.
Let's put it that way.
So, I guess my, I still stand that I would just like to have a little more input from them, or at least invite them to come. But I think we also can't go, we can't go in the hole either, you know, so if it's costing us money, but we don't, do we have that on here to raise today, or we're trying to throw it in?
No, it's a proposal.
No.
But we do have a staff that can clean up that line. It's still, we currently charge 50 bucks an hour, and then we still keep 50 bucks an hour. Is there something that's on top of their fee, or?
No, what that is, is it, it comes out of their cleaning deposit. So, if you leave it dirty and public works has to go clean it up, or like here for the community center, if somebody doesn't clean it, then we take, the janitor does it for us, and then we take $50 an hour out of their cleaning deposit, return the balance. And that money actually goes to, straight to the janitor, if it has nothing to do with...
Yeah. So, I'll leave it up to the rest of you guys.
I just, it's a detail, but the city hall, the conference room, rent is very low, but I guess that's okay.
We don't rent it that often.
Yeah.
Just like we don't rent the council chambers anymore. Every now and then, of course, I can just...
I think, maybe I can jump in, Kathy. On occasion, we've had, like, an attorney or somebody who wants to do a deposition and needs a spot, and they go asking, and you'll go, "Well," and I think it's something odd like that that happens.
And they only have a $50 deposit, and it's $50 an hour to clean up after them, but for the conference room, that probably isn't, isn't an issue.
Well, if an attorney's doing a deposition in our conference room, they're charging a good amount of money. I mean, that just gets out of the people's bills. So, it probably wouldn't cause too much of an impact if we raised that fee, just because if you rent a conference room for a deposition, you are going to be paying no matter where you do it. And so, maybe we do want to look at that.
And that does say per day, so that could be, you know, six hours. So, maybe it should be per hour or something, so that there's a sliding scale if somebody's using the conference room all day.
If you want to change it, we can do that.
Would you like to change to per hour, for 25 bucks per hour?
It's just a thought.
I think $25 an hour is reasonable for something like that.
Right.
I mean, hotels and some of those folks who are in the business of doing that, sometimes do that.
Probably doesn't...
Folks doing polygraphs and things like that.
Okay. We'll change in that per hour, for 25 dollars per hour.
If there's some special circumstance, we can always waive fees if we have to. Okay.
Anything else? I'll open it up to the public then. Hearing, not even cricket stripping, I'll bring it back up here. Do you have something?
I know that I had a council question about also parking fees. I'm just throwing that out there.
Parking fees?
I had that question, Dusty.
Parking where?
In the police section.
In the police section.
It was posed as, our parking fees have not been raised in some time, and the chief actually looked at the breakdown of that.
Yes, after I talked to council member Connie, I looked at it, our last, so we use Data Ticket, which is a company that processes these for us and pays everything we're required to pay out of that by law, which includes, mostly includes the courts. Even though the courts have nothing to do with our parking tickets, it doesn't go through them, by law, we have to pay $12.50 ticket to the courts. In August, which was the invoice that I had just received, we received, and we have to pay Data Ticket too, to process these things, which is very, very reasonable, because we don't have the staff to do it. And they also have the ability to have DMV hold somebody's registration if their tickets aren't paid. So, we ended up getting more compliance to the citation. So, anyway, in August, we received for the city $650 of the parking tickets, and the courts received $460 of our parking tickets. And it's not a percentage, it's per ticket.
So, if we raised the amount of the fee, it would all go to us, the additional amount?
Well, I think I've seen Scott, and because I've been doing a little analysis on the same subject, someone else that, the, a lot of places will take the base parking fee and then add the court, what do you call it, assessment or whatever, and basically say, "This is our fee, they'll put on our fee structure plus $13 or whatever court assessment." And if the court raises it, I'm assuming that what happened is there was a resolution passed, probably, and I think all these date back to when the courthouses went from county to state or whatever, and they had some costs associated with that. And so, they basically passed that on to us and all the agencies and the different municipalities out there. So, I don't think it's outlandish to add the...
Court fees.
The court fees, and just put it as part of our fee structure, that it's $40 plus $13 court fee. And it's no different than a regular ticket when you see the breakdown. At the courthouse, they'll say, you know, victims of violent crime assessment and court assessment fee and whatever they throw on there, you get a breakdown. So, that's why you're typical speeding ticket. Sometimes that $50 speeding ticket ends up costing you 150, because everybody else tags on their fees, but that's...
Correct. So, we, before, when I reviewed our portion of the fee schedules, I looked at a lot of other departments and what they charge, and we were right in the area. Now, I did not notice the, any assessments, but I probably didn't look at them.
Yeah, that's, and I noticed that was a reason that some places give for raising their fees, is the court assessment that gets charged. Basically, we set them at X rate, and along comes the court, and, and I was, back when I was at the department, I don't think we factored in the court assessment that we were paying. I think we found out about the court assessment through the, it wasn't Data Ticket then, but the company.
It was a different company.
Yeah, basically said, "Oh, yeah, and on top of this is the court fee." So, I think it's reasonable, but...
Is this under, under item 19?
Yes, parking citation.
Okay.
It's the line that says, "All other parking citations are 45 dollars."
Yeah, all these.
Well, this.
Yeah, this and this. This is, this is all parking citations.
Okay.
Other than disabled parking.
Okay, so we're talking about the line 19 and the 23, right? The 23, the 45?
Yes.
So, I think it would be reasonable to say the base rate is $45 plus court assessment, and depending on what you determine actually is the, that cost, that should be listed on the schedule fee, so that the bulk of the citation is going to our police department?
I don't disagree, and I guess what we would, if that's what the council wants, if they raise them, then we would come back and change that, or just put whatever the court fees are.
We just say plus court assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, and we could fill it in, but that would be our, our direction, is to update it to the current charge.
And I think it would, it gives, it's a ticker for you every year to, to double check and see, because I'll tell you what, the courts have added so many fees that in the years we started in law enforcement, you could get a ticket signed off and you weren't charged. Now, if you get a fix-it ticket, they're, they're going to charge you, the court's still going to charge you for that fix-it ticket, and...
It's 25 bucks.
Yeah, and that went from free to 25 bucks, and so, the court gets their pound of flesh, and sometimes they use us as the bad guys, but it's...
Is that on here too?
No, that's a, that's not a parking ticket. That would be a court fee you'd get.
We don't charge anything for fix-it tickets.
Yeah.
Do we have to make any special motions to change that?
I think she's taking notes of the proposed changes, and then she'll ask for a motion including the changes.
We just approved the resolution with the proposed changes.
If there aren't any other changes, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation with the changes that had been already noted, included in that.
In that resolution.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Wrong as a public? All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, June.
Consent calendar, you pulled the minutes, is that correct?
I did.
So, we have authorized an agreement with Fisher Wireless for the conversion of existing police chief's vehicle to a patrol car for a total of $12,837. All right. Do we have any questions? Otherwise, I'll call for a motion on the consent.
Just, just for the public, would the police chief mind just expressing how this is a savings for the police department, as opposed to buying a new vehicle and a patrol vehicle?
Right. So, the minimum cost for a new patrol vehicle is 34,000. If we were to buy a new vehicle for 34,000, we would still have to put most of what is listed as the conversion, which is the 12,000...
Red light siren.
So, we would, so that would be in addition to the cost of a new vehicle. I elected to give up the vehicle that has a, it has low miles. The last chief was generous enough to make sure that the new chief got a low mileage vehicle. What I'm going to do is use several of the vehicles that, unmarked vehicles and pool cars that we use when other vehicles are down, when I have to go out on patrol or respond to crimes.
And this vehicle that's being, that would be converted, would be used by?
Patrol and the SRO, and the SRO goes back.
Okay. And the current vehicle being used has excessive miles?
189, well, probably has more now, but when I wrote this, it had 189,000 miles on it. And we are, we are spending a lot of money on vehicle repairs because of our old fleet.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to accept that.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public want to speak on our consent? All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right. We have some informational reports which people can read on our website, building inspection and business license activity. And now, commissions and agencies. The Willet City Council meets concurrently as the city of Willets... The Willis City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willis Planning Commission and City Willis Successor Agency. And sitting as the successor agency, so I guess we will adjourn as the council and open up as the, yeah, what's the word?
Reconvene.
Reconvene, thank you. I'm just having a loss of words there. As the, sitting as the successor agency of the Willis Redevelopment Agency, approve a resolution authorizing the successor agency to the Willis Redevelopment Agency to issue and sell tax allocation refunding bonds to refund certain outstanding bonds of the former community development agency of the City of Willis approving the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. We had a presentation the other day, let's.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. This is just the next item we had discussed a couple of weeks ago.
Could you repeat your name again for the folks?
My name is Eric Scriven, I'm with NHA Advisors. We're, our firm is your municipal advisor. So we are essentially the project manager for this project. One of the actions you took as, as the board last time was to also authorize the city manager to appoint or hire a bond counsel firm. So bond counsel is a very specialized attorney that puts together these types of financing documents. And Q-TAC Rock, Albert Reyes, is the lawyer who put this document in front of you. So what you're, what you would be doing if you elect to do so tonight is approving the indenture resolution and some collateral information like the savings report so that we would send that to the oversight board of the county of all the agencies. And they have the final, they'll have a chance to review. And if they approve these very same documents, we would then, as your financial advisor, by law, we have to put together a financial advisor report that then packages this all up, puts a little bit more background to it, and we send it to the Department of Finance for their approval. And they, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, have 60 days upon receipt to approve the transaction. And there are certain parameters that are outlined in the law that have to be met. And net present value savings, actually it's just cash flow savings of $1 or more. You can't really extend debt. They want to see these things wound down as much as possible. That was the whole point of dissolution. So if there are any questions, this is just the next step. And then the next step after this would be the oversight board. I believe it's scheduled for Friday.
Friday.
4:00 PM.
Yeah.
To have them approve and then we will get the certified documents from the clerk and put our pack, our report together and send it up just right, as quickly as possible to get the 60-day clock going. Because the market is very good right now as we discussed last time. And the sooner the project is completed at the right rates, of course, which are the job we're going to be doing, that's better for savings. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? I guess just a.
Were any of these documents approved in what, the, the analysis?
Analysis approved by this board.
Oh, the package, we can send that to, we have put that into the package for the oversight board, so. They actually saw the savings. I don't think it's required, but because you've seen these savings, we didn't include the savings analysis in this, in this agenda item.
Yeah.
Because you had seen that a couple of weeks, typically we would have it included, that's our bad. But it's, it's not, it's not really changed. It's, it's in fact a best estimate right now. We have a lot of legwork to do once we get this package up to the Department of Finance. But we did include that savings analysis for the oversight board meeting on Friday because they haven't really seen it and that's, it's appropriate to do so.
And again, a kind of a recap that the city would expect to realize approximately, approximately $24,000 annually if we do this. So it's, it is saving our city money to go forward with this.
Correct.
So rationing for the record that we're not just doing this on a whim, we're doing this to try and save constituents.
Absolutely.
Money. Do I have any questions or anybody from the public want to say anything? Hearing not even the crickets, okay. I have a motion.
I will move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion, say any further discussion? All right, call for the vote.
Councilor Connie.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Be careful ahead of that.
Pleasure.
Thank you for moving so quickly on this. They say government is slow.
We did opt to it, it's, you know.
All right. Reconvening back as the city council, city manager reports and recommendations.
I really don't have anything today other than to say that we closed out our Music in the Park series. It was very successful, had lots of people come out and it was all paid for by some very generous donors who came out and looking forward to spend.
Stephanie, maybe, again, we don't have a lot of public, but maybe you can recap for the folks out in TV land that they've got power, that, what efforts you and everybody in the city have done during the PSP.
Sure, thank you so much. So as you know, we've been really watching this PSPS Wind event in California. We received notice of it and we've been on standby. Actually, the county and CalOES and PG&E hold, has been holding telephonic meetings three times a day. And they start at 7:30, then there's a noon meeting and then there's a late meeting. And Kathy and the chief and I have been sort of tag teaming this. Last night's meeting was very spicy because we didn't know whether or not we were going to get turned off or not. We had, when we found out this was happening, the PG&E site, actually for government agencies, went down. And so we were unable to see if the maps were going to change and it was, it drove us pretty crazy. We, you know, it's when they, they tried and tried to prepare for the event, of course, all this preparation. When it really happens, it's completely different. So we were ready with generators, we had our water system ready to go. We were pretty much poised, even though the maps did not show that we were going to be a part of this.
And one question, a person asked me, on some of our outlined areas, did we have generators at those little stations?
Yeah, we were totally prepared.
Okay.
Yeah, we were prepared to have absolutely no outages of sewer or water service. We were prepared to have this council meeting if we needed to have it, if we didn't, we were ready to go. So we were watching very closely at the meeting last night. Conditions changed. At one point, they told us that Willis had been included. PG&E actually issued a press announcement that was wrong, that said that we were included. And we sort of caught it right away and said, no, we're not, that map has not changed. Then they revised, said, oh, I'm sorry, my bad. And then they went out again and said we weren't. And then at about, at our meeting at 5:30, about halfway through that meeting, they said, oh no, Willis is included. And we asked about Willis because they didn't mention us and we said, we need to know. And they, and then they called, they said, oh, we'll find out later, we'll call you tonight. And we said, no, 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 it's going to happen tonight, so we need to know. So Kathy actually yelled at him over the phone, that was great. And they called back.
We got an answer.
And we got an answer and said, yes, well, they said, well, first they said yes. And then, then we started moving into action and calling everybody. And then our, actually PG&E representative texted me and we were texting back and forth. And she said, don't listen to them, no, you're not, you're okay. I have, I actually have the real information. At one point, they said, you should talk to the sheriff, one of the sheriffs in elementary, in our county asked the question. And they said, well, you should talk to the county. And they said, we are the county. And so it was, it was, it was a very big phone call, a lot of people involved. But anyway, so then we were, then we found out that it was actually Allison Talbot, who comes up and talks to us occasionally, she was great. She kept in contact with me throughout the day via text. And she says, no, 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 Willis is fine. I have 52 addresses that show Willis, but my, they're outside of the, we believe they're outside of the city limits and they're not affecting the city. And so that's the information I tried to put out to the public. It's like, it's going to be okay. These people were already notified, I was told that they were already notified, they know who they are. They had no glitches in communication with those, with those people, with actual, with actually in the zip code, but not within the city limits. So we felt good about that and we were monitoring. The chief was on the phone call this morning at 7:30 and so far we're good. But we're, but it's, but it's a fluid situation and we're stressing with people, it's fluid and so we're, we're ready.
Just a little bit more information, the 53 or whatever it was from Golden Rule, because they have a 95490.
You're right.
Okay. Is it Ridgewood Ranch?
Ridgewood Ranch.
Because that's actually where the map, that's where the line was, was Ridgewood Ranch.
One, one comment about the concerts in the park. The only one I missed was this last Thursday.
Yeah.
And some friends of mine just said, they were fantastic, bring them back next year, just so you know.
That was, that was the Johnny Young Band.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
They had a following, they have quite the following apparently. They, they rocked the house. They were, they were the most rock and roll we've been. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Department recommendations, and I'm going to go first with discussion, possible action to adopt resolution approving professional services contract with Lakos Associates for a not to exceed amount of $70,000 to prepare a groundwater management plan as conditioned by Proposition 1 grant funding for the groundwater project. Sounds official.
Yes, this is a follow-up to a decision made at the August 28 council meeting to commit to complete a groundwater management plan in order to receive $550,000 from Proposition 1 funding for our groundwater project. We are recommending an award of contract to Lakos Associates to prepare the groundwater management plan. And are there any questions about?
And I think it says in there, this was all budgeted.
This is budgeted. There's, there's sufficient budget to complete the groundwater management plan as well as the plans and specifications, which we'll need to complete this, this winter in order to put it out to bid and start construction on the pipeline phase of the project by July of next year.
Any questions up here?
It's entirely going to be, this amount is going to be covered by this grant that we're going to get.
No, this, this is going to be covered by our budget. We have funds budgeted to complete the preliminary work this year. This, this project was, was budgeted solely from city funds. And then this grant opportunity came along early, early this year. So it's going to pay for half of the project. We were, we budgeted somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.1 million for this project over the, over the next couple of years. And so this, this grant will pay for, for about half of that.
And these are enterprise funds?
This is from the waterfront.
Yeah, so by doing this, we're actually saving our ratepayers money because the less of the money is going to be used, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Not saving the money, folks. All right, unless there's anybody from the audience that has any questions? All right, bring it back up here and see if they have a motion.
I shall vote.
I'll give it to Larry, you can have the second. All right, any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote on adopting the resolution.
Councilor Connie.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky. Mary Gonzalez.
Yes. All right, we're busting through everything. All right, department recommendations. He's what, only because I think he's texting, fire chief, you got anything?
I have a question for the fire chief.
All right.
Would you come up front? Chris, I was stopped by a person downtown from out of town. And he said that the, first of all, that, that there's a color code on the hydrants of the pressure, like red and white and yellow. And that they have to be on there because if we would have an emergency and we would hire or ask for people to come from out of our city to fight the fire, that they would have to know that pressure at that particular one because then they could gear their machine for that. Is that true?
That's not the case. There's a, NFPA has a guideline that you can use for that. And we've actually followed it with the Paint the Town or Paint the Hydrant program. If you notice the caps and the tops on the, all the hydrants that are down in the lower part of the valley are all red. That meets the color scheme. It's just about the caps and the, and the top of the hydrant that, that meet the color. Historically in Willis, we've never followed a color. They all come with the color yellow, usually. The old Greenberg used to come silver. But we've never went out and painted the hydrants. The closest thing we've had to a hydrant painted with the correct caps color and the top color is actually when this group went out and started painting hydrants, quite honestly.
Was that direction you gave them was, if you're going to do it?
Yeah, it's if you're going to, if you're going to paint them, the caps and the, and the top need to be the right color. We're not bound by any statute to have any particular color. And quite honestly, operationally, if somebody comes from another town and they hook to your hydrant, they are not making adjustments based on the amount of volume of that hydrant. It's up to the agency that's sending them to the hydrant to, to give them a, a good fire hydrant or not a good fire hydrant.
And also, this person said that in their community, that they have a blue reflector out in the street that, that shows that there's a hydrant there in case they couldn't find it as they're driving down the street.
And we have that mostly throughout the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I, I didn't know the answer to either one of these questions that they have.
Yeah, there, there is an NFPA guideline, it's a guideline. It's not, it's not a law, it's not a rule that you have to have it that way. There is an NFPA guideline for that. You know, and quite honestly, if the cap's the right color for what we've specified to them, that's, that's what, that's what makes the difference.
Okay, the blue reflector was some, something that I thought was maybe a really good idea.
Yeah, you know, and that's all built a long time ago for people to find things. All of our mutual aid partners right now, we have what they call Active 911. It's literally an app for your phone. Our entire hydrant grid is on that app. So when they, when they come to town and they're following the Active 911 app on their iPad that's in the rig or their phone, the hydrants are already located, they're pre-located, they're pre-numbered. You know, a lot of this stuff is because there's folks that don't care for the hydrants being painted and they're looking for a reason for it to be a different way. But the reality is, it's 2019 and we have technology that's told us that, where the hydrant locations are in our community. And then we share that information with our mutual aid partners.
This was a person that was from out of the community, meaning it wasn't a community person.
Okay. And I will tell you that if you look at a lot of other communities, Fort Brack, all their hydrants are white. And certainly the different zones within their, within their hydrant grid have different colors. If there are pressures on it, higher pressure, higher, it goes by volume, not pressure. They're painted different colors, but it's, it's maintained and they're numbered and it's really hard to keep up with. I don't think it's a project that our public works, certainly not the fire department can keep up with as far as sandblasting and maintenanceing fire hydrant color. And historically in Willis, you know, our first hydrant that was painted here was the Snoopy hydrant across the street from the firehouse. Every complaint that we received about that hydrant being painted, I asked them what color that hydrant was originally. Not one single person could tell. And this is folks that have been on our fire department for over, well, around our fire department for their lifetime. So, you know, that, that hydrant was silver with a green top, which doesn't actually meet NFPA standards of any sort.
Anyway, I've just relayed the message to you because I, I had no idea and I couldn't answer the person.
Yeah, anytime, or have them call me, that's, that's always a.
No, they're out, they're gone to wherever they were going, I mean, they were passing through.
Okay.
You know, well, Chris is still up here. Larry and I and Stephanie and Michelle took us around. We did our ad hoc visit of some of the marijuana facilities. We did our ad hoc visit of some of the marijuana facilities that are up and running as part of our ad hoc. And Chris was able to provide us a lot of informative safety information. Places we visited, I'll tell you, they look pretty safe. And you can't tell what they are from the outside, you can surmise, but as far as odor control, till you got inside, you couldn't smell it. So I, my hats off to those businesses that are complying and jump through the hoops and my hats off to the fire department for all the work they did to make sure it's safe for the firemen and the community.
You know, it's a group effort. The community development department, building department and ourselves, we've worked very, very hard to make sure that it meets those standards and we continue to do that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Dusty or Scott?
Just something real quickly. This is among other things, Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the police department, everyone but me, because I have a different uniform, are sporting pink patches to, I'm sorry.
You might explain, they, they have the Velcro, right?
Right. So, so the, they wear tacto, fully tactical uniforms and their patches Velcro on and off for the way they, they clean their uniforms, et cetera. I have a class, it's called a Class B uniform and these are sewn on, so I would have to destroy some of my uniforms to have that. I would really like to, but I am contributing by having pink patches.
Is that real?
You wanna see? Thank you.
Dusty?
So glad, glad to hear that you enjoyed the tour and, and what you said about the fact that you wouldn't even notice what activity was happening with that building if you hadn't been there or knew about it. It's exactly what the goal is with, with the ordinance. So that's good news. And some of the other council members that, that were part of that tour, I would encourage you to go ahead and tour some of these facilities. So I'll reach out to the owners and try to set that opportunity up for you if you'd like. Yeah, 'cause they, they spent a lot of money and I, and I think you probably found that they're pretty proud of, of what they put together.
Yeah.
So I know that they'll be anxious and excited to, to show that off to the other council members, so we'll, we'll make sure to make that opportunity available to you. More good news. We got official word from HCD Housing Community Development that our grant request for $160,000 has been approved. So we're expecting a standard agreement soon. We'll get an RFP out and get the process started and certainly the council.
Dusty, can you do a recap?
Yeah.
Which, what is this grant?
Yeah, yeah. So this, this was an over-the-counter planning grant that is aimed towards creating new housing in California. And so the proposal that we put forward was studying a, an expansion of our sphere of influence of over 300 acres that the county, that's currently in the county and the county has zoned for variable density housing development. Well, the constraint on developing housing, this is the area of South Adella Avenue, is that there's no water and sewer services there. Any type of development's gonna have to rely on onsite septic and well water. You can't support significant, really any type of great density development if, if, if you have that limitation. Well, the city has a very bright future in that we own our own watershed, we have a state-of-the-art, you know, sewer treatment plant, we're sitting on abundant groundwater resources, we're going through the steps of creating a groundwater management plan. We are actually one of the only places in the county that really can truly support, you know, significant housing development growth. In order to extend our services into that area, that land needs to be annexed into the city. Before we can annex it into the city, we need to include it in our sphere of influence. Before we can do that, we need to study that. We're gonna use the state's money to do that. Yeah, so this, this is kind of, you know, it's a little bit of an exciting moment, but there's a lot of work and a lot of things that need to go right and then we need to have a good partnership with the county property owners, future developers, et cetera, but.
Dusty, do you foresee us being a consultant that would do that?
Oh, definitely. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, so that's kind of a little, little recap on, on that, so.
Thank you, sir. Andrea, do you have anything you wanna share or are you?
Sure. Just wanted to give a quick update on the two projects that we have currently going on in the city streets. We have also a watershed project, but the North Maple Street project was, the paving portion was completed and they raised their iron today, so that project is gonna be winding down. And the Pine and Vicinity project, we paved half of the streets today and the remainder will be paved tomorrow. So the paving portion will be completed and that project will begin to wind down as well.
I had to stop and chat. I was walking through the other day and one of the residents just wanted to thank all of us for doing it. And I said, "Well," I said, "I think you can thank the way the city's doing the water, sewer and everything and combining these projects and it's not any one council member, it's not any one person saying, it's just this group effort to make sure that we're spending our money wisely and that you guys are giving us good directions so that we're not paving something, digging it up and repaving it with patches and..." Because honestly, that's the city I grew up in. We, we did things that way and I never liked it and it's kinda nice to be able to put out a quality street.
Yeah, we, we make a big effort to make sure everything underground is taken care of before we, we pave.
So, thank you.
And I just wanted to add that I have some, I live on North Street, I have some neighbors on Maple Street and they said that even without paving, their street looks better already.
I agree.
Thank you.
June, did you have anything?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. Okay, I guess we'll go down to city council committee boards and agency reports.
We, it wasn't technically a Caltrans ad hoc committee meeting, but there, on Monday, there was a Caltrans and Granite final partnering meeting. Larry and I have gone to these on a couple of occasions. This time it was Stephanie and I. And essentially it was a wrap-up for Caltrans and Granite regarding the Shore Grove project. That project, it still isn't quite done. They have about a week and a half to two weeks left of work for finish off, but essentially they were patting themselves on the back and saying, "It was nice working with you and good job." So that was really it.
And they gave us lunch?
Yeah, they gave us lunch. They gave us lunch. I actually didn't stay for the lunch, but.
You know, I, Larry, did you have the?
Yeah, I have the, I went to MCOG instead of going to the meeting with Caltrans and it was just, it was on a coastal community that is still in limbo about how, what they're gonna do with 101, Highway 1 that goes through their town. And there were probably the most people that I've ever seen at an MCOG meeting on pro and con for this particular community. And I can virtually say that I don't think, I've ever been into the community and so I'm gonna have to go there because.
What was the community?
Albion.
What?
Albion.
Yeah.
Albion.
And so, well, I've been to Albion. No, it was below Albion. What's below Albion?
Elk.
Elk, Waldo.
Keep going.
Nellie County, then.
An arena?
No. I can't think. Anyhow, it, it was a, I'll tell you next time when I see you. So that was it for me.
I attended LAPCO on Monday and a big issue there, we actually held it up, they, they call it the Wager Detachment for Mendocino Coast Healthcare District. Some property, best way to describe it is closer, closer to Orr Springs that was included in the Comanche School District boundaries, which when it became part of the Coast District Hospital, you have people that are complaining that it takes them an hour to an hour and a half if they were gonna drive to the Coast Hospital versus going into UVMC, even though the road isn't that good this way, it's about a half hour for most of them to come this way. And they wanna detach from the Coast District Hospital and a lot of this was spurred, even though the, a lot of them got in there before they owned the property or maybe they didn't care at the time, but they recently did some, I think they called it Measure C over there on the coast to pay for ambulance stuff and, and now all of a sudden their taxes went up quite a bit and these folks are saying, "We're paying for something we're not gonna use or ever gonna use." And so they approached LAPCO to detach from that district hospital. I think the caveat would be you get to leave if, but you're responsible for all debts that were on the property before you leave. So any bonds that were voted in before, they're, they're stuck with and, but they wouldn't have to pay the assessments the future, going forward. The Coast Hospital showed up and they wanted continuance. It was granted based on the, LAPCO's council wanted more time. He was out of the area so he couldn't review what they had issued. But that, again, it was kinda like Larry's description, there was, the most people I've ever seen at LAPCO. You know, usually you're not used to seeing too many people and it was a pretty busy meeting. So, and actually, it's just kinda like seceding from the union, so to speak. I'd never done, most of the time people wanna join or connect up with a particular district or a public entity. You know, they want fire service, so they wanna join there. Ironically, the director of the, I guess, ambulance or whatever for the Coast District Hospital, Coast District Hospital is also the fire chief of Comanche, which services that area. And so he kinda spoke on behalf of the hospital, but there was quite a bit of testimony given from all the residents there that they want out. So, so again, it was put over to the next LAPCO meeting in November. So, and that's all I, so.
EDFC was going to meet tomorrow, but they've canceled the meeting because of the uncertainty of whether they would have power or not. They probably do have power, but they just didn't want people to have to drive all over the county to go to a meeting and necessarily have one. So I guess that's been postponed and I don't remember the date that the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority will be meeting, I think, next week.
I believe it's the 24th.
24th.
September 10.
10 o'clock in the morning here.
I'm also on League of Cities and they're having their meeting coming up in, I think, November in Long Beach, but I won't be attending. And I think in deference to our budget, I figured that if you ain't all traveling, I'm not gonna travel or request for that. So I think it's something that we should be more active in, in the future, but till our budget reflects some better, better numbers, I, I can't see spending money. That was my feeling on it. So, all right.
I realized, I forgot that Caltrans was going to do a final walkthrough on the Shore Grove project that was scheduled for, what, last Friday, last Thursday or Friday?
Yes.
And it was canceled because the project hasn't wrapped up yet. Dusty gave them a tentative date earlier today, but we're waiting to finalize that. So that will happen and that will include all city staff and Rob Wilburn and, you know, all the essential players.
This is the one that's the walkthrough?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's tentatively the 24th.
And that's on Shore Grove, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just say thank you guys for staying on top of that. When I saw that Caltrans had put generators on the lights here as a backup to the battery backup, I was kinda, made me think of, that's gonna be on us from 20 north here shortly and I think we need to get really dialed into what sort of preparations we might need to have, 'cause I know the backups will last for a couple hours, but if we're talking days, then we probably oughta get dialed into that sort of thing. I know we could put up stop, stop signs, but it does get pretty dark, so we need to have a plan. All right. Council member reports and recommendations? Does anybody have anything?
I just had a question a couple of, several weeks back. We had two community members during public comment ask about food truck ordinance and I wondered if we are going to discuss that at some point coming up.
You asking me?
Yes.
Let's, I mean, I think we all, I think at least two of us at that meeting said that was something we wanted to talk about.
Yeah, no, we talked about that coming up. We just prioritizing.
I understand.
When can, when do you think we can do that?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
When do you think we, we can, we can address that?
I have a ready report to talk about.
Yes. We do talk about.
Right, so, so currently, I think the, the main contention is currently city code disallows vending, including food trucks on or within one block of Commercial or Main Street. And I believe this is a regulation that's been on the book for a handful of years. And let me just add that if there are special events like music in the park or the farmer's market, you know, you are able to have, you know, some sort of food vendors in conjunction with, with an event, as long as it's sort of accessory and incidental to the, the main event. So I think what you're looking for is just a pretty straightforward report, noting that code section, noting it's in here for discussion and, and, you know, being prepared to, to make some changes to it, should the commission, council wish. So we could get that done in November.
I agree.
Yeah, it'll just be a, just a real simple report, just to get the matter in front of you for discussion.
Wasn't the rationale for not allowing food trucks on Main Street because of the brick-and-mortar restaurant?
Right.
Businesses who would feel that competition?
Yep.
That's, that's my guess as to why that rule came about, but it was a little bit before my time, but I saw some nods up here.
So Dusty, I think before we would have, I mean, if we have that discussion in November, I know we only have one meeting in November, but I would really like some of the brick-and-mortar places to be noticed that they were having that discussion, 'cause I, I've heard that and, and I've only talked to maybe one person who expressed that concern, but it'd be nice to have them at least told, so if we decide to do something different, they, they can weigh in. It may not, you know, what maybe was once a big deal a couple years ago, maybe isn't such a big deal anymore.
Can you reach out?
And the other people to reach out to were the two women who were here during public comment.
Yes.
I believe they left their contact information, they have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greta. Thank you, Dusty.
And just, well, in terms of upcoming meetings, you also asked about the, for PGDA to come and talk about opting out of the spraying roundup. I've had a couple conversations. It's not a difficult conversation for them to come to have, my understanding. It's, they, they say they're very busy right now and it's gonna be a while till they can do that. They wanted to just come and sort of do it under, at the beginning, the five minutes, just fill out this form and I asked them that they actually have, be an agendized item so people can ask questions and so we can actually have a discussion. And so they're, she's running it down the flagpole of permissions and all that stuff and I've asked Allison about that.
I get it. This, this time of year is bad for them and so.
Yeah, no, we've traded many phone calls and, and she's gotten some pushback in her hierarchy, but she's still trying.
And I have one other question. And I had actually emailed this to you. Months back, you sent out a letter that you sent to all of us that you had sent to, I think it was the railroad agency and the state regarding the two really bad windy areas that the fire chief had been quite concerned about. And I think you indicated you had heard from maybe the.
I, I had heard from someone, because it was a while ago. And I remember hearing it from somebody and I, for the life of me, I cannot remember what the response was. I think that there was a positive response because I think I heard actually from our state senator's office. And I'm gonna reach out to Dusty and Chief. Do you remember? We had asked to please mow your weeds to Caltrans and to NCRA.
Yeah, it had anything to do with Caltrans, we were more with the railroad.
With the railroad. Actually, no, I.
There were two letters, one to the railroad and one to Caltrans for the area beside the highway.
It was by, beside the highway and I think I heard from Mike McGuire's office that Caltrans actually did come and, and do what they were supposed to do. I have not heard about NCRA, however.
I didn't have anything to do with that being near law.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I had heard positive. I, but it was so long, I remember, I remember feeling, "Oh, that's great." And because I think it was Mike McGuire that also helped reach out.
But nothing from the railroad?
They've actually completed now.
Oh, okay.
Late, but it's done.
Okay.
Good.
Good, before a big wind event.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I remember having the conversation, I'm like, it's been months, I just don't remember, but I remember it being positive, and I think it involved Mike McGuire's office, and I think they reached out and said, "Hey, you know, we managed to do that, Caltrans did come out and do their, what they were supposed to do."
Oh, I was remiss earlier. Kathy or Jim, did you have anything that you needed to talk about or brief us on?
No.
When I was talking to the department, okay. I apologize.
I actually forgot one thing. I will be at the International City Managers Conference, and that is from Thursday, next Thursday through the following Tuesday. I will be here for the next council meeting. I would say that is, you know, normally training is, staff training is something that's covered by the city, this time I'm paying for that myself, so that's totally not taxpayer funds, but that is the city manager conference. It's a very important conference to go to, I've done every year for probably the last five or six years, and it's a really good event, learn lots of good things, and meet with people, and be able to tap into lots of resources, so I'm excited about that.
All right. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, do you want to chirp it, recommend, son of recognition, or report? Two things coming up next week. One is on Wednesday evening at 5:30, 5:30 here, I believe, right here, is going to be, or maybe next door, is going to be a town hall with our supervisor, John Heschek, and it's a great opportunity for people to ask him questions and state their opinions about things, and hear what's going on at the county level. And the very next evening, 17th, is going to be the Harvest Moon Celebration downtown from 4 to 7, and so there should be a lot of things going on downtown.
All right, Larry, do you have anything?
Not a thing.
Anything else? All right, any good and welcome?
Mushroom, can I still? Mushroom can still.
All right, no closed sessions, so at this point, I guess, I wish you a good journey.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.